Good evening and welcome to the Foxborough Board of Appeals August 15, 2024 meeting. This meeting and the public hearings that we will be holding is being broadcast and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. An official welcome to Blair Crane, to our board. It was sort of semi-official last month, so this month is official. We look forward to working with you. The time being 7:00 PM. David Clayman seeks, one, a special permit pursuant to Section 3.1.6, Table 3-1, table abuses, use L5 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, to construct a detached garage that has a footprint larger than 625 square feet and exceeds 21 feet in height. And two, a variance under Section 4.1.1, Table 4-1, to allow the construction of the garage 15 feet from the rear yard setback where 30 feet is required. Subject property is located at 12 Creighton Lane, Foxborough, Massachusetts, in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District and Zone 2 of the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. Two or three things before we turn the mic over to you. First of all, we're a board of five individuals. We all participate, but only Lorraine, Kurt, and I will be voting.
Okay.
That's number one. Number two, in order to approve the application, our vote has to be unanimous. So Lorraine, Kurt, and I, each of us has to vote in favor of it. And number three is you can tell from the hearing notice, although you only applied for a variance, a special permit is also required. And that's because you're looking for a detached garage that has a footprint in excess of 625 square feet.
Okay.
Okay? So why don't you introduce yourself, tell us about the garage.
My name is David Clayman, and this is my wife, Bonnie. We are moving to Foxborough to be closer to our amazing 28-year-old son Nicholas, who currently lives in a group home on Baker Street. Nicholas is a loving child and a vibrant member of the Foxborough community. He attends Revs games. He loves going to Bass Pro Shops. He attends the musical celebrations in the center of town. He loves seeing shows at the Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center, but most of all, he loves Dairy Queen. Now for the not-so-good part. Our son Nicholas was born with cerebral hemorrhage and spent the first three months of his life at the NICU at Boston Children's Hospital. He has cerebral palsy, epilepsy with seizures, visual impairments, a VP shunt, and a left-side hemiparesis. He's able to walk with braces on both legs, but his cognitive ability is that of a young child. He has had numerous surgeries and invasive procedures. To say caring for him is difficult would be a gross understatement. He requires 24-hour daycare and gets it from some amazing caregivers at his Baker Street home. We are here before you today as parents requesting a variance to build a garage suitable for Nicholas's many needs. It falls within the 30-foot rear lot setback. We need a garage and a driveway suitable for his care when we take him home. Currently, we pick him up three to four times a week and bring him home to our existing home in Canton and for overnight stays when he is ill. While Canton might not seem, might seem close to Foxborough, the trip is two times each time we bring him home, and it consumes about an hour and a half in the car with him. Our new home on Creighton Lane is about half a mile from him, and this will make these transitions much easier for both him and us. The proposed garage will shelter him and his caregiver from the elements while entering and exiting the vehicle. The circular driveway will allow us to access the closest point to the entrance of the home. It is not a want, it is a necessity for him. We believe the improvements we are making on the existing home and the addition of the garage are positives to the neighborhood as a whole. The way the house is currently situated, the garage falls on the left side of the actual house position, and anyone looking at the property would reasonably feel that the garage is on the side, not the rear of the lot. Detached garages in the Kersey, Creighton, and even Ridge Road neighborhoods are commonplace. Most of these detached garages are situated near or at least within 15 feet of their respective lot lines. The location of our proposed garage backs up to our neighbors on 9 Idlewild Road's detached garage, which also lies within 15 feet of what would be considered his rear lot line as well. The placement does not interfere with any neighbor's views of the reservoir. To the contrary, my neighbor at 2 Creighton Lane would be getting a far superior view of the reservoir once the single-car garage currently on the property is removed. In addition, our next-door neighbor to my right would be getting an eyesore removed. The current single garage does not meet our requirements and is in a state of disrepair with a mud floor, a cracked foundation, and is only 10 feet wide on the inside. While we are formally requesting a variance under the Americans with Disabilities Act, we feel that it should be granted on the merits of the project and the fact it not only enhances our property and suits Nicholas's needs, but enhances the entire street. We feel that the, we feel, we feel we have been good neighbors before we started this process, and we sent out our contact details to all of our neighbors, asking them to contact us with any questions or issues that could arise during the building process. We thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to becoming your neighbors.
All right, let us ask you a few questions. The driveway itself that you're proposing, is that going to be paved, crushed, what?
Asphalt, but I'm, I'm open to any other suggestions. We just need, he, he needs, he needs a surface he can walk on. It can't be stone, can't be anything like pavers or anything like that, just based on his, his gait. He can't do it.
Why this specific location for the garage? Why not attach it to the house or close it to the house, which would obviously be more conducive to his ability to, to access your home?
Listen, it would have, it would have been a better option for us if we had thought about that more in the beginning. Originally, when we went to the building department, they said we were not, it was really going to be a long process to make additions to the existing footprint of the home. So we, we said, you know what, we'll do it as a detached garage, and we really didn't give it that much thought until we started getting into it. We brought a proposal of a two-car garage where the origin, where the one-car garage is now. Wouldn't have been optimal, but, and then we just went back to the drawing board and came up with this design, and we pushed it as far back as we could from the lake, figuring that there would be some concerns about putting a garage near the lake.
So the criteria for a variance, there, there's three specific conditions that have to be met. There has to be something that's unique about the shape of the property, or the soil conditions, or the topography. That's condition number one. Condition number two is that if we were to impose the requirements of the bylaw, meaning that if we were not to grant the variance, that would have to cause you substantial hardship. A hardship can't be personal. It has to be related to the soil conditions, topography, or shape of the property. And the third condition is that in granting the variance, we're not creating substantial detriment to the, to the bylaw itself. So forget the last one, because we can always find that, but what about the first two? What, what is unique about this property? What, what is unique as far as the soil conditions, topography, or shape?
Well, it's a 15,000-square-foot lot, where most, a lot of the lots down there are old 5,000-square-foot lots. The placement of the, of the garage, the proposed garage, I think, is where, where it should be on the property. I mean, when you look, when, if you go down and actually look at the property and see where the existing one-car garage is, it really doesn't belong there. It's 13 feet off the street. It's almost on top of where the house is. It's, it's really, it, it blocks views from the, from the neighbors behind us. As for soil conditions, I didn't really do any soil type evaluations there, didn't...
I mean, the property's not wet, correct? There's no wetlands on it?
It's the highest point on the property.
Okay, is there any ledge in the property?
None that we know of.
Okay.
But we haven't, we haven't put a backhoe into the property at all.
Go ahead, guys. Questions?
Just want to, on my end, what is the square footage of the proposed garage?
32 by 22.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure that was the number, okay.
Are there any questions?
So it, just at a glance, it does look like the proposed size could potentially fit in this area where the walkway is to the existing dwelling. You had talked about looking at, you know, putting a garage there to begin with, and so would you...
We would have tried to put it on the furthest point on the, on the house if, if it was going to be possible, but we ended up getting the permit. The, the house is in the process of being built.
So have you actually razed the current house?
When you say razed...
Has it been torn down?
Most of it was, but it's, it's, you know, it's backframed up.
Yeah.
The original deck is on there, but for the most part, I mean, when you, when it started to be taken down, there was really almost nothing left. I mean, it was, it was two-by, old two-by-three construction. Most of it was, I mean, rotting out. The house hadn't been lived in for several years. So basically, what's then, what we're putting back now is the same exact footprint, but with, you know, we, we did a two-by-six wall so we can insulate it properly. I mean, that, we're getting a much more energy-efficient house for, you know...
I did take a drive-by, and I noticed that is, the footprint is the same, but are you increasing the square footage of the house? I was just kind of curious about that.
We increased it by almost 20, well, 25%, correct?
24.75%. He was just under the threshold.
When I drove by yesterday, the first thing I did is I called Scott, and we talked about that, and so just under, yeah.
Yeah, and I confirmed with Gil, and I, I kind of recall it, and both of us discussed it, and I was like, it's under that 25% threshold, so it's a lot of...
So if you drove down there yesterday, you kind of saw where that, that garage is, like an eyesore almost on the street. We just wanted to be able to move it back so it's not an eyesore, and we can also, our son doesn't look down when he walks, so if you had stone, he'd probably fall. So it's got to be like, just kind of straight and flat.
And so that's the, the driver for where the proposed garage is, is just essentially to put it as far back as you can get it?
Well, back away from the, it's way, it's away from the water.
We thought the furthest point from the, from the, from the reservoir would make the most sense. I mean, aesthetically, it matches, it's going to match the existing house that's there, basically. Same color scheme, same everything. It's, you know, we, we came, came down to 32 by 22 from, the original plans were 36-24, and really, for what we need, we're figuring the middle bay is going to be used to get him out of the car. So it's, that's, you know, that was our thinking on it.
Yeah. I think I may have seen you, I drove by this afternoon.
Oh.
I think I may have seen you this afternoon, but...
Yeah, I'm on site quite a bit. If anybody, I mean, anybody wants to walk the property with me, I have no problem. Come on down.
So again, I think I, when I look at the size of the proposed garage and try and overlay it on the existing one, you did it?
Possibilities.
Okay, I did it this way.
Mm-hmm. But he's, he's increasing the, he, we need a, a variance here, front yard variance, because this is considered the front yard. So we need a variance there.
Because it'd be increasing it.
Yeah.
But if, if they're going to demolish it, if they left that the same as the existing non-conforming, like if it weren't...
You know, you have to move it back towards here, you know, to get it and still be 10 feet from there.
It's doable.
And we can talk about that.
Okay.
I mean, did you think at all about attaching it to the house? I mean, with a breezeway or otherwise?
Wanted to get the process going, so we, we did what we, we did, listen, if we, if I was going to come before, I would have redesigned the entire house and put something up a little larger, but we needed to get going on this to get over here. It's, it's just becoming too much. It's, you know, till you've, till you have to do this, it's, it's, you know, four times a week, it's back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I mean, it's...
And, and your son won't be living with you, he'll be still in...
No, he's, he's going to be Baker Street for...
Kurt, any questions?
And you, you mentioned you, you decreased the size...
Yeah, originally, we want, we thought 36-24 makes sense, but this is pretty much the, I want to say the smallest that we could live with, but it's...
Okay. Well, the two thoughts I had is, is it, what, 650 or lower? They wouldn't need a 625?
625.
625, okay. So that's, that's too small if you shrunk it down to 625?
Well, it'd be too small for three cars, I guess, right?
Right, okay.
Yeah. 625 is basically a two-car garage?
Correct. Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, and the other thing is, to me, like you said, Bonnie, I think that, you know, the, the location of the, of the proposed garage could be moved closer to the house.
My only issue with that is, I, if, if you do go out there, you'll see that this proposed garage almost backs up directly to the neighbors on the, on the left side of me. So if you move it down towards the house, you're now interfering with, with their sightlines and what have you.
I see.
This is almost like hidden off in the corner.
Yeah, okay.
If you, if you take a look, if you go walk down there, you'll see what I mean. It's almost pushed off towards the back.
Okay. So the location of the garage relative to the house is, is, in your opinion, that's the optimal location, because you could then walk on that like impervious surface all the way to the house?
Correct.
Okay.
You mentioned that you had provided your contact information to your neighbors, and have you received any feedback?
I did. I spoke to Gil, my, the neighbor on 9 Idlewild. He called and thanked me for sending out the letters. He said you didn't have to do that. I texted him about this meeting. I said, you want to, if you want to come meet me at the house, I'll show you what I'm proposing, just so you're not, you know, there's no shock to it. He, his property is, is the one property that really, if you would say gets affected, his is really the only one. The people behind me, it's, it's a positive to them. Peoples to the right, it's a positive to them as well.
Which one is 9 Idle? I'm just trying to figure...
It's on the, on the reservoir.
Okay.
It is directly to the left when you're looking at my house, and you'll see his, he also has a detached garage right towards the front of the property, where, where this would almost line up with it.
Blair, any questions?
I think I've had everything answered.
Scott, anything? Bank LLC.
Yeah.
That's owned by the two of you?
That is owned by the two of us.
So you're, you're the only members?
We are the only members.
I know you're the manager, and you...
I will say, I know, Scott, when I came to the office, and Gil also had that same concern, I do own a lot of property, rental property. This, the only reason we put it in, in Mank's name was I own the lot next to it, and I own the lot on the other side, so having two non-conforming lots under the same could pose an issue of combining them, so we did not want that to happen.
Well, we'll, we'll get to that in a few minutes. Anybody in the public wish to be heard? Nobody online? Unless we have more questions, you want to close up?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
As I see it, the problem we have, and I understand your situation, I think aesthetically, I can understand why you would want to have it here, but in order to get to the point of saying yes, we have to say that all the criteria for a variance have been met. And I'm not aware of anything relative to soil conditions or topography that would support a variance. The property is small, but that's not a variance criteria, and there's nothing unusual about the shape. So, so I can't, you know, get there. As far as substantial hardship, again, I think if the garage was situated elsewhere, and I realize your reasons for not wanting to do that, you would satisfy your needs and, and the requirements that must be met as far as, as your son, and, and perhaps not need a variance. For example, if, if this was attached to the house, you, you wouldn't need a variance from us, even, even if you were encroaching upon the, the setback. You would just need a special permit from us. Criteria is much, much different. I think, but I don't know, because I'm not a civil engineer, that the garage could be placed elsewhere on the property. Now, the fact that you also own the property that is, I guess it'll be directly to the south?
Directly.
Coming back from the reservoir, right underneath this quote-unquote, and I think you own the one in the corner also.
Correct.
As far as I can tell, the two properties are merged from a zoning standpoint, which means, if I'm correct, and I think I am...
Separate deeds.
Doesn't matter. From a zoning perspective, they're merged. So I, if I'm correct, and you may want to speak with an attorney, but if I'm correct in that regard, you could actually place the garage on that other, other lot.
I'm just curious, what makes you think that they're already merged?
Common ownership. Even though they're in different names, you have control over both properties, because you, you and your wife own...
We had the same thing in, in Sharon. I owned 164 Beech Street and 166 Beech Street, and that was not the case. But I'm not going to...
Yeah, I don't know what it is in Sharon.
It's not, the point of my thing here today is to get a garage so we can...
So in other words, I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is, I, I think there are other options that, that might be available. Okay? I'll turn it over to my colleagues, they may totally disagree with me.
So it's this piece of property you're talking about here, right?
Yeah, the better one would be, would be this property here.
Yeah.
Yeah, 137.
Yep. Okay.
37?
Mm-hmm.
So repositioning the proposed garage more in that direction would eliminate the need for variance.
This is something that Scott and I have talked about, and we had a telephone conversation with town council, and I think he agrees with us.
Yes.
How far, so how many feet, which side is, what's the front, what's the side? I'm sorry.
Of what?
Of the 37 lot.
37?
Yeah.
It's 5,000 square feet.
Is the front on the Creighton Lane?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the front.
But for example, if the garage were like, sort of, sort of in the middle there, or even like over here, you know, straddling it?
Yeah, because the proposed driveway would come...
Let's just say for argument's sake, you know, you put it sort of like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Yeah.
And that works?
And then in that case, could it be the 704?
Or bigger, yeah.
Or bigger?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then it's just a special permit?
Then it's just a special permit. Eric, do you follow what I'm saying?
I do follow your statement.
Blair?
Yes.
Any questions on that? I, I guess really what I'm trying to say is, I think there are other options, or let, let me step back a second. You know, again, I, I don't think you've met the criteria for variance, okay? You know, I understand, you know, the argument of, you know, coming under the, you know, the ADA and the fair housing. In, in essence, you could say that by approving the garage, we're providing, you know, we're, we're not establishing, but we're meeting that criteria, meeting that requirement. But we still have to get over the fact that, from a zoning standpoint, a variance requires certain requirements, certain criteria have to be satisfied. And if they're not satisfied, in, in essence, we're not, you know, we, we would be allowing by approving something that is, is not appropriate, is not consistent, not allowed technically under the, under zoning law.
Well, that's the, reasonable accommodation would, would sort of, the purpose of it.
Yeah, the garage is the accommodation. You could look at it that way.
Yeah.
But, but again, I, from my perspective, and, and I'm only one of, you know, five people offering perspective, I think there were other options that could be looked at and considered.
Okay.
And I'm sure that Scott would be happy to, maybe not happy, yeah, Scott would be happy to talk with you about...
I could talk to him, but I can't design it for you.
Yeah.
But I can get, I can break it down layman's terms.
Can you show him this?
Well, let's...
Kurt, any comments?
No, no other questions, no.
Thoughts at all there?
Good argument.
Eric?
I just had a question about the existing leaching pit on here. Does that have to stay?
I don't know if it has to, it passed Title V. I have a...
Because it, because it looks like the drive, proposed driveway just circles around that. I just wasn't sure.
There's a, there's also that other circle that's 10 feet from it. If you...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it gives that a...
Relocate that would probably be costly.
I bet, yeah.
That high watermark is probably, have something to do with it as well.
Correct. Because he's going to have to perk it, and he's going to have to find a new location. I mean, it could be costly.
I know that can be very expensive, so. But no, I don't have any other questions.
Eric, sort of, you know, going where you are, you know, because of the size of the, of the garage, it would have to have a foundation, and a foundation has to be 10 feet away from either the septic tank or, or the leaching pit. I was told that, you know, the driveway itself would not, you know, constitute that kind of concern.
Okay.
So any other thoughts? So we got an option. We, we can deny the variance, or we can continue the hearing, give you an opportunity to look into other options, and...
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense. I mean, it's just, we're not, we're not going to move into the house without having this for him. It's, it's, the whole purpose of us moving to Foxborough is something that's, that's going to be conducive for him.
I mean, I'd like to get there.
Yeah.
But, but do so...
Yeah.
In the context of what the zoning was requiring.
Yeah, sure, listen, if you're not comfortable with, with, with this, I mean, I, I will try to figure something out.
Okay. How much time would you like?
30 days.
We can continue it a month? We can continue it two months?
One month. I, I, I mean, I, this is top priority for us.
Okay. What's our September meeting?
September 19th.
All right, so why don't we take a motion to continue the hearing until September 19th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one, don't go away.
If you want to talk to me, I'm, I'm out tomorrow.
Okay.
Monday, Monday I should be around, or just give my secretary a call.
Perfect.
One of my admins.
I'm always in town, so...
Yeah, and they'll, they'll set something up. It's better if you call them and schedule something, then we can sit down.
Perfect.
Can I get you to sign this?
Sure.
This'll just allow us to continue with, and again, with what the timeframes that are required, okay? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, very much.
Okay, the time being 7:10 PM. Paul Fennell seeks two variances pursuant to Section 4.1.1, Table 4-1 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, to, one, allow a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residential structure to be extended or altered by the construction of addition that will cause the structure to have a side yard setback of 13.5 feet where 15 feet is required, and two, to allow the construction of a detached garage six feet from the side yard setback where 15 feet is required. Subject property is located at 24 Adams Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District, and is not located in any restrictive overlay district. Mr. Fennell, good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening, thank you for having me.
The floor is yours. Tell us what you're proposing, and we'll go from there.
Awesome, thank you. So first, we're going to amend our application. After our neighbors were notified, we spoke with them further from our original discussions, and they are uncomfortable with how close the off detached garage would be to their property. So out of respect to them, we're going to remove that from our application. So we will just be going for the first part of our application of the accessory apartment or in-law, which would be on the left side of the house when you're looking at it, which is the 13 and a half feet. So my wife and I, we live at 24 Adams with... with our two sons. One's a two-and-a-half-year-old almost, and we just had another baby who's two weeks now. So we want to, you know, apply for the accessory apartment to allow my mother-in-law to move in the house. We rely on her a lot for childcare throughout the week. She currently lives in Holbrook, and with our work schedules, it is pretty tough, you know, commuting back and forth every day around childcare and work. So the goal is, you know, to move her into Foxborough so she can live with us. We moved into Foxborough in 2021. We originally lived by the golf course on North High Street. Once we realized we were having another baby, we needed to expand our house. We had a two-bedroom there. So we found our property at 24 Adams. And, you know, we fell in love with Foxborough from the first moment we started living here. And this was a way to, you know, stay in the town is by getting her to move into the house with us. So our request to you guys is for the variance for the setback of 13 and 1/2 feet so we can adjust the existing attached garage, just bump it out a little bit. It's currently, I believe, 625 square feet for a two-car garage. And we would like to, we have to submit the special application as well for the accessory apartment. And we just want to bump it out further so it's an 850-square-feet town max, just to have the most space possible for my mother-in-law.
What are the? Actually, I should sort of said at the beginning, again, there are five of us, even though you heard in the last hearing, five of us. We all participated. Only the three of us will be voting. And again, our vote has to be unanimous. The proposed addition itself, what are the dimensions of that?
That would be. I have it somewhere in here. I can't read it on the small. 28 feet long.
I'm sorry, 28?
28 feet long, front to back. And I believe it's 30 feet wide. I think we're, from the current garage, I think we're only going out an additional four feet.
It's 840 square feet.
So it'd be 28 long by four feet wide?
No, by 30 feet.
30 feet.
No, no, just the addition itself. Forget the garage.
Oh, yes, yes.
It's four feet?
Yes.
Okay, so what is the current setback?
20 feet.
So it brings him to 16.
So.
You're right.
Right? So his current setback is 20 feet.
Yes.
The addition that he's putting on is 28 feet long, four feet wide.
So he'd be cutting into it.
16 feet.
He'd be about 16 feet from the property.
That's what I thought going into it.
He doesn't need a variance.
I didn't think I needed one, but after talking to the person that did the survey of the land, he said with everything included in the plans, it would be 13.5. I didn't really agree with that.
I mean, when I drove by, it looked awful narrow. So I didn't even think it was 20 feet wide. But if it's only four feet, and again, you're not taking the garage down. You're just renovating it.
Correct, just pushing it out a little bit.
So you're putting an addition on that's only gonna be another four feet going towards your neighbor.
Yep, just a wooded.
So if you're at 16 feet, then he'll need a special permit. No, he won't need a special permit. He won't need one.
Well, yes, he would. Because he's increasing the habitable space. Because it's going from a garage to habitable space.
Yeah, and I do have, you know, this is for the special application for it, but I do need to attach the variance to the special application.
Because I think if he's gonna make the whole garage into like livable space, he's gonna meet that 25% criteria. I do believe. You'll be close, another close.
Well, you said it was what, 850?
850 is the max for the accessory apartment, correct.
Okay, and right now, the assessors office has you at 11:32, so it's definitely more than 25%.
Yeah. So that, a special permit would be required.
Yeah, I don't think.
5.4.
Yeah, I don't think he needs a variance.
Well, if you can meet the setback, if you can meet that 16-foot setback, you don't need the variance.
Yeah.
I'm pulling up the foundation plans. I probably incorrect on four feet. So this might be what he is seeing. Five feet, five inches is what we have to go out? Does that bring us to the 13?
That brings you just below 15 feet.
Yeah, yeah. And I can, you know, provide more of this if you guys would like.
Yeah.
But yeah, so it'd be 28 by five feet, five inches. Sorry, it's just hard to see on the small.
And you're positive that setback is 20 feet now?
Yes, that's what we had on the initial mortgage plan when we moved in, the plot plan. And then with the new plot plan he drew up a month ago. That's what showed us at that 13 feet.
Scott, do you want to take a look at that? Because I'd much rather this be a special permit.
That'd be great.
Oh, goodness.
Yeah, that's. It is tough to read.
Was there a discussion, design of this to produce that bump out in any way? I assume there's specific reasons for why you need to go out that additional.
Yeah, we just want to go out because it's right now the 625. And just, you know, she's moving from her full house. We want to give her as much space as possible. And we know the town law on the apartment is 850 square feet.
Yeah.
So by bumping it out, we can get to that. We will not go over that.
Although in February, it's gonna be 900.
6'4"?
6'4".
Okay.
The addition would be 6'4".
Wide?
Yes.
The 28 by 6 and 1/2.
So if it's 20 feet.
So, yeah, he's like 13'6".
Yeah, so that, yeah. So what the surveyor has is correct.
He tried to shrink the font, at least.
Oh, who did that?
Is that three-season room currently there? Or is that?
No, it is just the garage. And we talked with, you know, our septic tank. We originally wanted to kind of put it on the back of the house, behind the garage, so we could keep our two-car garage. But the septic tank and everything is back there, so we can't go behind the house. And on the other right side of the house, we have a pool and hot tub and patio. And our HVAC system's on the right side. So everything would be kind of a mess if we put it anywhere else.
Could you have put this addition, this extra space, in back of the house? In other words, you know, instead of over here, like over here?
I think the issue with that was where the septic tank fell.
That was the septic.
Yeah.
Do we have any marking of the septic?
No, not in this.
See it on here?
I do have. This is from when we moved into the house of.
Show the septic?
Yes.
It's probably a NASB from the planning board, I mean, Board of Health.
And this was in 2022?
Thank you.
So this is the rear of the house here, the septic tank. Chamber.
Do you have the option to, since it's no longer gonna be a garage and you're gonna lose the driveway, do you have the option to go closer to the street? Instead of going laterally toward the property line to go toward the road since it's no longer gonna be a driveway there?
We might. I just know there was part of the special application was parking spaces for the accessory apartment. So I'm just not sure how much that would take up.
I mean, there's plenty of distance.
He was saying of pushing it out here.
Instead of. Narrow and closer to the street.
28, so longer than 28.
Longer and narrower.
It keeps you away from your 20, from encroaching on the boundary.
On the 15.
According to this, it looks like you have 57 feet.
With this here, isn't there a septic? If they push out this way, aren't they gonna cover up?
This, yeah, the septic, we've talked to the company that redid it in '22. We'll have to do some more work to expand the leach field a little bit because it will be a four-bedroom house. And maybe this could be another issue with going forward is to grade the land properly for the new leach field. He was gonna have to put a retaining wall in along the driveway.
Now, I was thinking more of interrupting this pipe here if you pull, push it out.
The pipe that runs from the back to front?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he might very well.
He didn't, when we talked to the septic company, it seemed like that was an issue.
I presume it's be slab on grade. You're gonna extend the slab over from the garage?
So as you heard in the last, you know, hearing, the variance criteria, you know, some uniqueness as far as soil conditions, topography, or shape. As criteria one, criteria two would be substantial hardship if we were to require adherence to the zoning bylaw. And again, that substantial hardship has to be related to the shape, topography, or soil conditions. And that's all getting to why we're talking about other options as far as, you know, locating that 28 by 6.4 proposed addition. You know, as Blair pointed out, if it was done in the front, you know, you do have plenty of distance to the street. So you would not be coming close to the, you know, to needing a variance in that regard. If you did it in the back, you know, for example, you know, where the porch is here. If you did it like that, I think you're far enough away from, you know, from the septic tank that you're not gonna be causing yourself any problems.
The only reason why we didn't discuss to us the back was we have solar on the house, and all the solar panels and electrical are on that space in the back. So we just felt it'd be easiest to not have to move all of it. So, because the left side of that garage is just a wall. There's nothing else on there. So it would just be, you know, easiest construction-wise, knock the wall down, build a new foundation, and go back up.
So the solar's on the house, not on the garage?
Correct, solar's on the house, but all the control panels and septic control, I think there's a septic alarm on it. I'm not totally sure. But that is all on the backside of that garage, right there. Kind of where that bedroom would be on that exterior wall is where all the control panels are. So instead of having to rewire all the electrical for that.
And even though you don't plan on putting the proposed garage in here, is that driveway exist?
Yes, that is an existing.
On that side?
Yep, there's two driveways on the property.
So would that cover any parking? It looked like there's a long enough driveway anyways, but it would help with the parking situation should you.
Come forward.
Move forward closer to the street.
Yeah.
My only concern with going forward is just size of, you know, bedrooms and stuff making it feel longer, skinnier. But, you know, that's a conversation to have with my mother-in-law.
We won't go there.
Still not substantial hardship.
Go ahead.
I think.
No, we should probably ask any other questions that we have.
No, I don't have any.
I don't have any other questions.
Guys, any questions?
I do not have any.
Do you wish to be heard? Do you wish to be heard?
I, sure.
And just tell us who you are and...
I'm Marie Ryan. I'm the neighbor. I just want to thank Paul for drawing the application.
Come to the microphone, please.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I just, I'm A. Marie Ryan. I'm the neighbor at 20 Adams. I just want to thank you for withdrawing the application. That driveway right there has been a thorn in our side forever because our bedroom is right next to it. And from what, the house that we live in now, it was my grandmother's house, and she went away for a weekend years ago, and they put a driveway in. And it's been loud there for many years. And I spoke with Paul, and Paul's a new neighbor, and I hated us to start off this way. But I'm grateful that he's pulled the application. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And your address is what?
20 Adams.
20 Adams, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Want to close the public portion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
All right, you started saying. Go ahead.
So I think there's other options to come forward to get that full square footage potentially. So, you know, I would not be in favor of approving the variance to go to increase the side defect there.
So in other words?
It gets very tight there.
Yeah, it's tight. He hasn't really met the variance criteria.
No, hasn't met the criteria, no.
Kurt?
Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing. I think that, you know, it can be done, but just has to be, you know, a rethought on how to get that done.
Eric?
Covered all my concerns. So I'm excited what Kurt says.
Blair?
Yeah, my thoughts, similar to Kurt's. I mean, you still have a few feet there to play with, you know, stay 16 feet out. So you don't necessarily have to bring it all to the front if that was the case. You could, you know, try to meet the best, get the best of both worlds there and, you know, still keep your 16 feet and then gain your square footage, whatever you're missing towards the front. You know, like you said, to try to keep it from being narrow.
We could do like 30 feet by 3 feet instead of 28 by 6 or something.
Sure, exactly. And push out to the driveway area, yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, again, as I indicated in the last hearing, I just don't see the variance criteria being satisfied. There was a huge pile of ledge, you know, directly in back of your house, and the only place to place it would be here. And then we have at least met the first criteria.
Yeah, the hardship would pertain to the site conditions, not like a, you know, a personal or business condition or something. You know what I mean?
Okay, yep. Because we have other options, essentially.
Yeah. The other options, let's just say he went back or to the front. He would still need a special permit because he's increasing habitable area. So again, I think the better thing to do is to continue this.
True. I just have one question.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
How many parking spaces do you have currently now?
Two in the garage, which will be gone.
Which will be gone?
There will be, we can fit, I believe, four at the driveway leading into the garage.
Okay.
And then three on the other.
Without adding that addition?
Correct, correct.
So if you add that addition, would you still have that four?
If we go forward?
Yes.
I think we'll have three.
I think so. I think you'll solve.
I'm looking, so you have, it's like kind of a, it opens up as it goes.
Yeah, so that's where I don't, if we go forward, I just don't know how much of that opening it will... Because right now, you can fit, you can easily fit two and then two going up the garage, I mean driveway. But if we go forward, I just don't know how much of that wider space to fit two cars side by side.
The only reason I'm asking that, Mr. Chair, is because Diana just brought it up. In order to get a special permit granted through the planning board, he has to, accessory apartments require two more spots per, for accessory apartment.
Whether it's a one-bedroom or...
Whether it's a one-bedroom or not, I mean, I don't know if...
But again, he's got two driveways.
He has two driveways, right.
Yes. So you do have two driveways?
Yes.
And she doesn't like that driveway.
Well...
Widening the driveway be an option?
I think that's a septic leach field issue because he had to talk about putting a retaining wall in since we couldn't go wider on the leach field.
Yeah, if he has the four, he's good.
Yeah, all you need are four spaces.
Yeah, so we would definitely have the four.
And if you, I mean, even after you put that addition on, I think, I mean, it's doable.
Decent-sized driveway, so.
Yeah, I think you would have four spaces there.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention. She brought it to mind, and I'm...
Yep, totally fair.
I mean, if there's 57 feet there, there's definitely four spaces.
Yeah. You know, if you're waiting till February, you can go to 900 square feet, and the parking requirements are reduced. That's because of a change in state law.
Really?
We're going to have to change our bylaws, yes.
Yes.
Continue this till February.
Continue this till February 2022.
February 15th.
I mean, my mother-in-law would love the extra square footage because she is very antsy.
So Diana, what, they require two?
On the application for an accessory apartment, it says, "Show on the plans that there is adequate parking for the two additional vehicles required for the accessory apartment." And you're written a statement explaining how many parking spaces there are in total and where they are located, in a garage, off the driveway, in the backyard, et cetera. Further state that you understand that the planning board reserves the right to require screening for proposed parking.
Okay, but he's not going to be requiring two additional spaces, so... That's their rules and regs, right? Is that what you're reading from?
But if he only needs two parking spaces right now for a three-bedroom, he only needs two more, so he only needs four in total.
Well, he's not going to require four in total, so I think they could... Well, I shouldn't talk about the planning board, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Because he's not going to require four.
He require, they require...
He has two, two family, and then one for his mother-in-law.
Right.
So...
So he's only, well...
But again, I think...
You have to show that there's adequate parking for two additional vehicles.
I think that the way that the regulation states is if you're applying for a special permit for an accessory apartment, you have to have proof that there are two extra...
Spaces?
Spaces for parking.
Okay.
For that accessory apartment. I think that's how the language reads.
With two driveways.
It's hard to read on a phone.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I don't know the calculation of that, but it sounds like you have six on the one side, including the garage. You'll lose those two, and you'd still have four.
Yeah.
We could, I think we could easily fit two in the existing after the in-law is done, and then two on the opposite side. I think we easily have four.
So continue it, not the February.
No.
Yeah, I think the front setback in an R40 is 25 as well.
35.
Is it 35?
Yeah.
35, okay.
Diana, this is what, 24-7, the case number?
You have the folder.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, want to make a motion?
Motion to continue the public hearing until...
September 19?
September 19.
Second.
Okay, anyone in favor?
Aye.
Can I get you to sign this, Paul?
I do have a check for some phone calls.
She appreciates that.
Yeah. Is that not good for you, the 19th?
Uh, yeah, that should apply.
If there's a problem, just let us know, okay? Great, thank you very much.
Should I, you know, what is my next steps now? Do I need to come back?
Be here on the 19th, obviously, to show us whatever you come up with. Or if you feel that, you know, you're not ready, then let, you know, Diana know. But I think the best thing would be to talk with you in the meantime.
Yeah, if you give me my admin call, they can schedule an appointment if you need to talk to me. But like the chair said, you have to just try to get redesigned before then and see what you can come up with. And if you have any questions, feel free to contact me.
Okay. And then if we're able to, you know, kind of go a little bit out and then more forward where we don't need a variance, or should I still come back?
You'll still need a special permit.
You'll still need a special permit.
Okay, got it.
So you definitely need to come back, no matter. You're just nullifying the variance portion of it.
Got it, okay, awesome.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. What do we got, minutes?
Minutes. So we didn't do, I think I didn't finish them or something last month. So I have the both, the June 26th and the July 18th minutes. I think I sent both out to you recently.
Want to do them both together?
Sure. I know you sent me one name correction on the July minute. When did we do the 119? No, I was doing the June minutes. Yeah, to fix Stephanie Kiefer's name.
Okay, anybody got any changes?
No.
I wasn't here for the July meeting.
Okay.
Motion to approve minutes?
About June and July.
From June and July.
And we all vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything?
You want to do the reorganization? You're all here, you can do the reorganization.
Oh, reorganization, yes. We've got to reorganize. And this is just Lorraine Kurt and me. So Kurt wants to be the chairman. I'll take a motion.
A motion to have Barney over as chairman.
And...
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I'll have to vote myself. We need a vice chairman. You want to do it?
Kurt want to do it. I'll leave it up to you guys.
I was just going to say that.
Sure, I'll do it.
Yes.
Okay, let me make a motion that, to approve Kurt as the vice chair and Lorraine as clerk.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Anything else?
Well, there's one, well, these two continuances, obviously, but one, another addition over 25% on North High Street that's out there I'm expecting soon.
For next month?
For next month.
Okay, and as I mentioned to you, Frank Spillane is working on a variance. Why don't you give him a call and tell him that we're going to have three other applications in September? See if he'll wait until October.
I may not be able to make the September meeting, but I'll confirm with you this week.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
That one that's coming in September is the one that you and I spoke with a lot yesterday, too. Again, that's way over the 25%.
Okay, that's one on North Street, North High Street?
Yeah, North High Street.
I wonder if it's this guy's old house.
Okay, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.